June 2nd, 2021 Treasurers Report. Payable checks in the amount of $161,737.82. There are only six major vendor checks. One, two, three, four. There's only four listed on here, but it says six. Edna?
Oh, okay.
It says six check, but there's only four listed.
It should be four.
Okay. There are four major vendor checks, and those major vendor checks come to $127,366.69. Payroll, ACH for May 14th to include Social Security and Medicare, $179,733.68. So grand total accounts payable, major vendor checks and payroll is $341,471.50.
Okay. We got a motion to approve that you can send it. Who made the motion?
Mike Mark.
Michael? And Reggie second. Call roll please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, old and new business. We got... To go in Ridge Creek. You go across Ridge Creek up into the upper part, and right there, there's a big intersection. We've got a lot of right away. Check. And we can get these working on. Should be in in the next eight. With that, can you read it as a bill, please?
Bill number 21069, ordinance approving a quotation from Federal Signal Safety and Security System for the purchase and installation of an electromechanical rotating siren.
Get a motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion, Charles seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 21069, ordinance approving a quotation for Federal Signal Safety and Security System for the purchase and installation of an electrical mechanical rotating siren.
Get a motion on the reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance.
Ordinance number 3709, ordinance approving a quotation from Federal Signal Safety and Security Systems for the purchase and installation of an electrical mechanical rotating siren.
Okay. Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Reggie makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. The next item, 3.2, we have a excess because it's a cascade trailer system that we used to use, but we got all new air tanks, so for the last couple of years, we haven't used it. And I guess Robie Fire Department has asked for it, and we'd like to donate that to them. I think the dollar donation was what, $2,500 or something? I think this is what they assessed it at. But they can still use it, and they power up there because they have the old style air tanks, so somebody will get some use out of it at fire prevention.
It was $2,000 there?
$2,000, okay. Read it as a bill, please.
First, would you correct it for your signature? It should be June 3rd instead of May 25th at the bottom, please.
Probably the prior ordinance, too.
In the prior ordinance, yeah.
Yeah. June 2nd.
June 2nd.
Yep.
June 2nd. Okay. Your Honor, normally we cannot donate to private parties or charities. We can donate equipment, use equipment to other governmental entities, so it is an exception to the anti-donation rule, okay? So we're all right doing this. Bill number 21070, ordinance authorizing a donation of an air trailer designated as surplus property to Robie Fire Department.
Get a motion on the first reading. John makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 21070, ordinance authorizing a donation of an air trailer designated as surplus property to Robie Fire Department.
Get a motion on the reading of the...
Motion.
Walter makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes. Read it as an ordinance. Ordinance number 3710, ordinance authorizing a donation of an air trailer designated as surplus property to Robie Fire Department.
Motion for Teresa.
Teresa makes a motion. Get a second. Charles seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Turn it to the left.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Okay. 3.4 is an ordinance repealing ordinance number for the purchase of two Stargate Tipper trailers, and that comes from the transfer station. We ordered two of those trailers. We got told they were going to come in in January. We got an updated price.
3.3.
3.4.
Yeah, 3.4 now.
Yeah, it's 3.4. We did, oh, we didn't do the hazmat trailer.
3.3.
Okay. Thank you, Reggie. Okay, 3.3, an ordinance authorizing sale or trade of the hazmat trailer as surplus property. Anita, you've got information on that?
That was, came in at $1,000 or less whenever they did the appraisal on it. Mike said it leaks, and there's, it needs a lot of work on it.
Yeah, we had two of those trailers almost 20 years ago, 18 years ago, we bought. So it's a pretty old trailer at this point. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 21071, ordinance authorizing a sale or trade of a hazmat trailer surplus property.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bill number 21071, an ordinance authorizing a sale or trade of a hazmat trailer as surplus property.
Get a motion on the second reading. Teresa makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Ordinance number 3711, an ordinance authorizing a sale or trade of hazmat trailer as surplus property.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Reggie makes a motion, Teresa seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll. I'll get you on the next one, Paul.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. 3.4 now. This is coming from the fire department. No, this is the transfer station trailers. Basically, we got, we had an invoice for $66,000, I guess hadn't gone through the process. By the time it got through the process, they had to send us a new one because they're now $69,000 a piece. So hopefully this will lock us in for that price, but prices are going up very quickly. Everybody should know that. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 21072, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 3683, and authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Stargate Dural Wall Tipper trailers for the city of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Walter makes a motion. Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll. Yes.
Okay. I looked at the format down here with the amounts, and it's a little bit confusing, Mayor. They have $67,395, and then they have a discount of $500.
Hopefully, we got the right ones in here because we had, we had the...
That's applying a $500 unit multiple discount, isn't it?
Yeah, and then they have $66,895, and they turn around...
Material price increase is the next thing.
$2,675.
Right, so it goes to $69,000.
So there's a number transfer?
Price is $69,000.
$5.70.
It looks like it's supposed to be $5.70.
So they could have just put in the ordinance, guess $69, $5.70, and just left all that other crap.
No, because we already...
That should be $5.79.
This is the invoice we got.
Okay. All right.
We didn't make this up. Came from Larry Butterfield. John?
Yeah, one additional question. In the exhibit, it says $69,570, but then the ordinance says $69,750.
Yeah, that's the backwards.
Yeah. That's the other point.
The unit price is wrong.
Yeah, in the ordinance.
But the total price is correct.
Total price is correct, the unit price is incorrect.
Sorry about that.
So you can correct that, what is it?
$5.70.
It's supposed to be $69,570.
Charles, thank you. Okay, if you make those corrections before we do the reading of the ordinance or the bill. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Questions?
The total price is correct.
As long as the total price is correct.
We got a motion and second already?
Good catch, but total price is right.
Edna, we got a motion and second?
No. Yeah, Walter, and then Linda.
Okay. Call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, second reading, please.
Bill number 21072, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 3683, and authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Stargate Dural Wall Tipper trailers for the city of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Get a motion on the second reading. Teresa makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3712, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 3683, and authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Stargate Dural Wall Tipper trailers for the city of St. Robert Transfer Station. Can we change all of these dates that are incorrect to June 2nd?
Yeah. Okay. Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. John makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, the next one, Steve at Public Works has been working on, I guess.
What happened to the first aid now?
This is the AED service plan, if you want to tell them about that, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was, we have about nine of these AED machines.
It's supposed to be 21, 07, 3, and then 37.
We've been inspecting them ourselves, and pulling replacements on whenever we can, and whenever something does happen to them, we'll take them out of service. It usually takes us, you know, two weeks to get parts for them. With this plan, this guy will, he already comes around once a month anyway, and fills up all of our first aid supplies. He will actually do all the inspections. The batteries are included. Software, any software updates are included, so we don't have to send those in. He'll take care of them. If the pads expire, he'll put new ones on there. So it's actually a pretty good deal. The last, I looked it up, the last time we bought batteries for him, it was a little pricey. They were around $400 bucks for each unit. So in this plan, it will cover that.
For how long? Is it just a one-year with renewal?
It'll just keep going unless you don't want it anymore. Just like a month by month. And the nice thing about this is, I think we had to replace one year old back, and I think it was $2,300 to replace them. If we get into this contract, he actually has to replace it once.
That's not too bad.
Because it's $1,495.
Oh.
Yeah. So you get pretty good savings right there.
Okay. Yeah, they're expensive, I know that. A lot of the schools are starting to keep them.
Why didn't we have a service plan in the first place?
I don't think we knew that there was a service plan, so we were just checking them periodically.
Chief?
Yeah.
Chief, oh.
Say hi.
Okay. Steve, why didn't we have this before?
Didn't know about it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. The guy actually visited, you know, walking around our facilities when we started getting the first aid kits and all that stuff, and he said, hey, I've got a service plan that I can take care of those. Not really a contract or anything. You can start it whenever you want, stop it whenever you want, you know? It's just a monthly service that he offers.
It's kind of interesting because I didn't realize it either. He's actually going to be, he'll take care of our AEDs and our batteries and our pads. So it's actually a really good thing. It really is.
Yeah, so if they go out, the fire department probably use theirs more than what you wouldn't wanting here.
Right.
They go out and use theirs, and then the pads aren't really good. This guy here will actually put new pads on, update everything, and it's included in the cost.
Steve, Steve, what was, where did he come from in the first place? I mean, how did we get him?
I think there was, I'm not for real sure. I wasn't involved in the first initial buyout of these. I think it comes from some kind of a grant when we first got them.
No, I'm talking about that.
No, I'm talking about where did the company come from? Why is this company here, anyway? For you to find out about it.
Because they do our first aid kits.
Oh, and he said, oh, by the way, we do these also. Oh, he said it just like that?
I was like, that's the golden stuff for us, and fire department do.
Yeah, he comes around, and if he doesn't need to fill anything in the first aid kit, there's no charge. If he fills it, then we just pay for whatever we use or whatever he fills.
Whatever supplies he's placed.
And if he goes through and there's something that's getting outdated, he pulls that and puts fresh, updated stuff in there.
Okay. One last question. He actually worked for the people that makes these? Does he actually work for the people that produce them?
That produce the AED machines?
Yes, sir.
No, he just sells the product.
Oh, okay. I see.
Okay, read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 21073, an ordinance of the city of St. Robert authorizing the mayor to enter an AED service plan agreement with first aid now.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading. John makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter? Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 21073, an ordinance of the city of St. Robert authorizing the mayor to enter into an AED service plan agreement with first aid now.
Get a motion on the reading of the second.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes, ma'am.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3713, an ordinance of the city of St. Robert authorizing the mayor to enter into an AED service plan agreement with first aid now.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion, Teresa seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Moving right along, 3.6, I believe, there, right? Okay. This is a thing that Tice was working on. We got an update throughout.
We have three different contracts that we have to modify with FERC for our plan with MoGas. It's a transportator, transporter on the pipeline, on the natural gas. This was approved by all of our allies on this. We are usually in concert with Waynesville, St. James, Cuba, and ourselves. We're the four entities that have that service on the pipeline. We save a little money on the short period, but if we don't do it, we go to trial, and we end up with probably much more cost in attorney fees and stuff. So our counsel with FERC, Steve Pearson, has recommended that we sign these three contracts.
Yeah, and it's good for ten years.
Everybody else has executed them.
Yeah, it's a ten-year contract, too. That's good. Okay?
Bill number 21074, an ordinance approving contract number FRMST31004A with MoGas Pipeline LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute that agreement and bind the city by his signature.
Get a motion on the first reading. Teresa makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 21074, an ordinance approving the contract number FRMSTJ1004A with MoGas Pipeline LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute that agreement and bind the city by his signature.
Get a motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Can you read it as an ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3714, an ordinance approving contract number FRMSTJ1004A with MoGas Pipeline LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute that agreement and bind the city by his signature.
Motion.
Get a motion on the, read it again, the ordinance.
Motion.
Charles makes a motion, Teresa seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll, please.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, this is another part of that thing that's at the same time. This is 1005, so, okay.
There are three different separate contracts. Bill number 21075, an ordinance approving contract number FRMSTR1005A with MoGas Pipeline LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute that agreement and bind the city by his signature.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
John makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Discussion. Tice, can you explain what this document does?
What?
Can you explain what this document does?
Well, you've got three different contracts. You've got, you've got the, you've got your thermally basis, there are three very technical contracts for transportation, and they refer, this one refers basically to the thermally equivalent volumes of gas adjusted for fuel, okay? The first one is a different transportation element. Our rates there are set by DECA thermes of gas, but they also, they, FERC also overlooks or supervises certain other elements of that. Thermally is the heat-based qualified stuff. The prior one was the...
These are three different towns.
I know, they're two different contracts.
This one says Saint James.
Well, they said Saint James.
This one says Saint Robert. And this one says Waynesville. Is that filled?
Yeah. Uh, did we do the Saint Robert?
Do we have to sign all three because of?
Did we pass these?
Waynesville.
Yeah, 'cause he, I need to look at it because it looks like they put different dates, they put different services on them, but they're also thermally equivalent, so we have to look. Give me a second. I can't do it on the fly.
This one says the city of Saint James.
Yeah, they're tariff, they're tariff rates. I have to look at it. Just give me a second and I'll be able to deal with it. I think we only have one contract. It would be my fault. I think I've...
This one says the city of Saint...
We wrote contract for Saint James on the first.
Yeah, but, but I gotta make sure that we're not, they're not three contracts because they told me there were three contracts. I don't know why they would have shipped me and asked me to do them.
Well, I read the last one said Waynesville.
I understand that. They've, they've got the city of Waynesville, Saint, Saint James. I missed that because I didn't want to fly. My fault. But I don't know why they would have sent me three different contracts and say we needed to execute three.
That's why I asked the question.
That's, but I have to check. So, I'm gonna have to look at the equivalent on these contracts for a few minutes and make sure that they're different ones.
So, uh, Mayor, I recommend that we table that.
No, let's just give them...
Just for a minute, I can take care of this real quick. So, if you all, why don't you read them and let me look at those three? You read, you start reading, you start reading after those three and finish the other ordinances. By the time you get done, I'll have them corrected.
Well, that'll change the numbers.
The next one's the blower and that'll be the last.
If we come back, we...
You know, we're giving... It, it appears to be the, for some reason, they sent all three contracts to the three separate cities with the different rates.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Well, three point...
See, there are three different... The problem is that, that the...
Well, they all have different rates because they got different amount of decatherm's that they're checking.
Yeah, but that's, what I need to do is compare and make sure that we have the same. Saint Robert is equivalent and that we only have one contract. It's my fault. She didn't do these. I did. So...
Doesn't matter who did it. It's just gonna be fixed. It's okay. No problem.
These are, these are complicated. They're hard to read.
No, that's not the problem. I, I was reading all of the, I was reading all the receipt.
They just got what their contracts of, yeah.
Yeah, I was reading the oh five.
All these, it looks to me like they're all identical. So, we passed the Saint Robert one, right?
No.
Did we pass what?
So, we need to resend twenty-one oh seven three, or twenty-one oh seven four.
Okay.
Yeah, this one's Saint James, I think.
Okay, let's pass Saint Roberts and leave the other two alone.
Yeah, but we passed the seventy, or thirty-seven fourteen, and that's gotta be the new number for the ordinance.
So, we need to, the one we passed...
We sent the ordinance we just had.
Yeah, we got it.
Do a vote to resend this?
We wanna...
Resend what we just passed.
We need a vote, we need a vote, I'm sorry, guys.
A motion.
We need a motion and a vote to resend the vote on, uh, ordinance number thirty-seven one four.
Motion. Second.
And then we need to, um, go to thirty-seven one five and twenty-one oh seven five, which should be Saint Roberts, correct?
That's right.
So, let's do that one.
So, we got a motion by Charles, a second by Reggie. Clarification, discussion, call a roll to resend thirty-seven fourteen.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Now, let's go back and read and pass the next one and read the number to get a clar...
Do you wanna change the bill number and the, um, ordinance number on those, or we're gonna have to come back with another ordinance to revoke that ordinance?
This ordinance number could be good, Mayor.
Pardon?
The current one for Saint, for Saint Robert should be good. It's just going forward. Do you wanna move down a number?
Well, that's what I'm asking. Do we wanna change this, this Saint Robert one to thirty-seven fourteen?
Thirty-seven fourteen would be the one we would want to pass because it appears to be Saint Robert.
No, thirty-seven fifteen right now until we change the number.
Okay.
I mean, if you resend an ordinance number, can you reuse it?
We've already passed it. We've already passed it, so we just rescinded it.
Okay. Can you use that same ordinance number again?
Yeah, but I think we need to pass an ordinance to resend.
We're just gonna leave that number alone and just call it rescinded.
We, we rescinded that. We just...
So, the next number would be thirty-seven fifteen?
Because it's incorrect. So, that ordinance has been rescinded or repealed. Okay? So, what I'd like to do is now go to the next number.
Twenty-one zero seven five.
Yes.
Okay, read it as a bill. This is the Saint Robert contract.
Now, while we're doing this, let me explain it, okay? It is a very limited agreement which modifies the current rates we spent days and hours working on. It only changes the rates a little bit, but they're in our favor. We have changed the term, which is also in our favor, to avoid a trial at FERC level, which would probably not be in our favor. Uh, we traded, they traded expediency for us. The last page of the exhibit is the transportation negotiated rate. And we went to a reservation rate of twenty-five, of twenty-eight fifty-three decatherm per month. That is a small inde- increase, a decrease in our reservation rate, which means that is the amount of pipeline that we reserve, the amount of capacity in the pipeline that we reserve in order, we have an emergency, special cold, special circumstances where we need to reserve. So, what we have there is our reserve in the pipeline. That's what we get and we're promised, no matter what everybody else is. So, that is a priority situation where we get this amount, we're guaranteed this amount, and locked in, and in case of really cold winter, this is very important to us. So, the rate's all right, but the reservation is just absolutely essential to us. And I do apologize, folks. I just missed that. I don't miss many, but I missed that one.
No problem.
Okay.
Go ahead and read it. I'm bad luck tonight.
Bill number twenty-one dash zero seven five, an ordinance approving contract number FRMSTR one zero zero five A with MoGas Pipeline LLC and authorizing the mayor to execute that agreement and bind the city by his signature.
Got a motion on the first reading.
We had a motion, we, we had a motion on the first reading, um, John Moore and Linda Daniels. And then there was discussion.
Okay, let's go back to that, then. We've got John and Linda second.
Yeah.
Got a call roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
I guess. I'm not real sure what happened, but yeah.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
No, I know what happened.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-one dash zero seven five, an ordinance approving contract number FRMSTR dash one zero zero five A with MoGas Pipeline LLC and authorizing the mayor to execute that agreement and bind the city by his signature.
Got a motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call a roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Does this mean that, um, like if we had another really bad winter and our people use a whole lot of, that doesn't affect that at all like it did before?
No, this is just a reduction because they want...
They could still charge us an outrageous amount?
The question is, it's a reservation rate. The capacity that we reserve is a different situation, okay?
So, if we go over the capacity we reserve?
No.
It, we norm, we have...
We pay for eight fifty every month.
We have a capacity that we reserve and pay for. And when we were negotiating last time, everybody said, okay, let's re, let's reduce the capacity and that way we can save money and that will help us pay for the increased rates with MoGas, okay? So, if we had maintained our prior capacity, which we had never utilized before,
Then we wouldn't have went over.
Then, then we wouldn't have got hit as hard last winter.
So, are we raising it again?
We reduced the capacity after months of negotiation, and this included, uh, all kinds of people all over the country. So, we negotiated down a capacity at everybody's recommendation because...
No, we didn't change anything. We're still at eight fifty. They're just locking us into eight fifty. That's what we've always had.
We negotiated down our capacity reservation.
Edna?
Pardon?
What's our capacity that we get every month, eight fifty, right?
It's eight fifty?
Yeah.
But we have an emergency reservation, Mayor, that we passed off. We, we pay a stipend for that.
We go over the eight fifty, we pay a lot more. But that's what we lock in at a rate.
Okay.
Okay.
You're right, I'm wrong. Oh, I, I think that I'm, I'm right.
We didn't change the capacities.
Huh?
We just, we're locking it in and they lowered the rate because, and I'm trying to remember what Pearson had to say, why, why we should take this and jump, jump with it.
Okay. I thought we had a guaranteed capacity with an emergency kicker on it that we all...
That's what we had, eh?
It's the eight, eight fifty decatherm's.
That's what we get every month.
Okay.
Okay. Read it as a bill.
Oh, oh wait, we, we stopped with me.
We stopped there.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John?
Second reading.
Now, we have an ordinance now.
Ordinance. We need a nap.
Ordinance number three seven one five, an ordinance approving contract number FRMSTR one zero zero five A with MoGas Pipeline LLC and authorizing the mayor to execute that agreement and bind the city by his signature.
Motion.
Got a motion on the, second reading.
Motion.
Charles makes a motion, Teresa seconds. Clarification, discussion, call a roll.
You're speaking out of turn.
Yes, Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
This is a very complicated process, very complicated. That's why we got the, the attorney in Saint Louis, or not Saint Louis, Washington DC, and Tice deals with him on a regular basis, so. Read it as an ordinance, please.
Uh, Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And John? Should we not need to repeal the prior ordinance? John?
Wait, is this Trojan? What are you throwing at me?
I'm not throwing anything at you.
I think we need to...
We can pass the workup.
Never have another meeting on Wednesday.
Yes.
Live at five.
Yeah, that one we got.
Glad you're keeping it on me. I'm trying to be really keeping it together.
This is number nine.
Okay, what is that one?
This is number nine.
Okay, go ahead and...
We gotta read it as an ordinance, please.
Sorry, I didn't...
Read it as an ordinance, please.
This one is fine. That was the one, Mr. Mayor.
That was the one.
Okay, this is a Continental Blower.
No, let me, let me do this.
It's not?
Yes.
Where are we at?
Three point nine.
We're on three point nine now, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, on three point nine, the Continental Blower that Tice is talking about, and Tice had some issues with the language in the contract, but because it takes so long, uh, we're gonna pass it anyway.
This is the Continental Blower.
Oh, okay, this is the...
This, this one, the language is fine. They did not do that. I talked to, I talked to, we have a supervising engineer, which is Alicia. I talked to her. I talked to Jeff. This is an essential contract position. These people built, bid in a very competent product, very effective product, at a very low rate. So, we picked our low bid and went with this one.
Okay, and you changed the bill numbers on that, right?
Yes, 'cause I, I had done agreements one through eight before. We did those on another meeting, so this is number nine. And yes, I'm ready if you are.
And it's zero seven six from bill?
Yes.
Please read it.
Yeah. Bill number...
Don't let it forget.
Bill number twenty-one dash zero seven six, an ordinance approving agreement with Continental Blower LLC for purchase of blower equipment for the wastewater treatment facility and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and legally bind the city by his signature.
Got a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion, Linda seconds. Clarification, discussion, call a roll, please.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Discussion. This, over two hundred thousand dollars is gonna be in installments or how is it gonna be, Mayor?
It's part of the grant.
Part of the grant.
Okay, so it's just coming in one lump sum?
Yeah, we do a draw. We get the invoice. Uh, we draw the money from, what is that place?
Bank?
FEMA, SEMA, and CDVG. And then the difference that we don't get, we take it to Bank of Missouri, they make up the difference, and it goes on the account for the seven million that we pay at the final end. So, it doesn't come out of our pocket.
Right.
That's in our pocket.
Yes.
Uh, Teresa?
Yes.
All done?
Yeah.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number twenty-one dash zero seven six, an ordinance approving agreement with Continental Blower LLC for purchase of blower equipment for the wastewater treatment facility and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and legally buying the city by his signature.
Got a motion on the second reading. John makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call a roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Teresa?
Okay, read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three seven one six, an ordinance approving agreement with Continental, Continental Blower LLC for the purchase of blower equipment for the wastewater treatment facility and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and legally buying the city by his signature.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Walter makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call a roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And that was thirty-seven sixteen, right?
The next ordinance, we need to put an extra clause in there. It says we repeal the prior ordinance passed. Uh, we passed an ordinance previously, uh, to buy a, uh,
lower.
A very specialized type of machinery from an outfit in, uh,
Canada.
Canada. And if you would look at the, uh, agreement, the, they added something after we approved it. They never executed it. They added language, uh, where they limited liability, which is the very last clause on page five, limitation on liability, and they had modified considerably our liquid damage damages clause, that they pay so much if they're late. Also, the contract had in place, it acted as if they were actually a construction company doing construction. We actually have a subcontractor to install this equipment. It's essential equipment, and it basically is a sanitizer or, uh, uh, for the product, and it's very expensive, and this is the standard. So, uh, we went back to the table with them, Jeff and Alicia, I, and several members of their hierarchy talked about it. The major negotiators were, of course, were Jeff and Alicia, because I, I had one objection, which is the limitation of liability. Limitation of liability for us is, is pretty limited, but if they delivered that real late and, and it's essential, it could cause us some problems. However, they are a really big dog. They don't care whether they get our business or not. We really need that piece of machinery above all else. So, uh, they did, uh, come to the table with us on liquidated damages to the amount of the contract. Before, it was a thousand dollars to today. We have, liquidated damages are now counted at, uh, the cost of the contract, which is several hundred thousand dollars. They would not come off the limitation of liability language. I don't think we have any choice but to just bite the bullet and do it. We have a one-year warranty that protects us pretty well, but, um, they, they had us, they got the leverage. They're really the only game in town at this level for that kind of property and that kind of equipment. So, um, after all of that, uh, we're gonna repeal it, the prior one. Now, that, that never went into effect because they didn't sign the contract. They said, we, oh, we're not gonna sign this contract. We knew one. But we have an ordinance that did approve that contract, and I think she's right. I think we need to repeal that, that old contract and that old ordinance. So, uh, if, if she's got that language in there, um, go ahead and do it. But that, this has been very involved, but we're getting up to the time where we need this piece of equipment.
Yeah, it takes ten to twelve months to get in here.
I've got the prior ordinance number. I can read it correctly.
I got a question.
Yes.
Uh, now, you talking about the ordinance we just voted on. You talking about this next one?
We, we did a prior ordinance.
This was a couple weeks ago.
We did a prior ordinance with a contract that did not have the limitation liability language in it. We approved that and authorized the mayor to sign it. We approved that and authorized the mayor to sign it. And they said, oh, we're gonna change their mind. We want this language.
Okay, I understand now.
Yeah, I think it was in April. We did contracts one through eight, and we approved them. And so we just wanted to take that one back.
We're gonna need to repeal it, but they came back door, and that started a big storm. But Jeff's, Jeff's position is, this is the standard in the industry. We need it, and we need to sign it. So.
What?
Yeah, Walter.
What bothers me is that this is a piece of equipment for the waste facility. And for Canada to hold us hostage to.
It isn't Canada. It's the company, but that's the only place that make it.
Of all, I mean, the whole United States.
Cuz this is new technology that we're putting this one.
Oh, okay, it's, this is.
They, they, they are really.
Yeah, we could've got some other lower technology, but this is.
They're, they're a global corporation. Uh, they, they feed everybody, you know? Uh, so this equipment.
This is one of those companies that moved to Canada.
This is the state of the art.
Okay.
Situation that we need to do.
And everybody's trying to get.
Twenty-two million dollar transfers, uh, twenty-two million dollar WWTF. We need it. So we needed to pass it.
Yeah, I can tell by their name. They can change up on it anytime.
Yep. Okay, read this bill.
Okay, bill number twenty-one dash zero seven seven, an ordinance repealing ordinance number three six nine two and approving a contract to purchase wastewater treatment equipment from Trojan Technologies Group, ULC, and repealing prior ordinance. Oh, it is in there. It's kind of. Sorry. And authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and legally buying the city by his signature.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Teresa makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-one dash zero seven seven, an ordinance repealing ordinance number three six nine two and approving a contract to purchase wastewater treatment equipment from Trojan Technologies Group, ULC, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and legally buying the city by his signature.
Okay, get a motion on the second reading. Charles makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
I thought we just did that one.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three seven one seven, an ordinance repealing ordinance number three six nine two and approving a contract to purchase wastewater treatment equipment from Trojan Technologies Group, ULC, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and legally buying the city by his signature.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Walter makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
And Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along to three eleven. This is another contract, uh, for rate study. Anita?
Yes, this is, um, a rate study. Um, we belong to Men Missouri Power and Energy Pool, along with thirteen other cities. And, uh, they had some money to do rate studies in the next three years. And one of the cities that was slated to have it done this year wasn't ready, so we went ahead and took their place on it. And this is just, uh, memorializing the amount that is gonna be paid and that we're responsible if we have.
We're not paying this amount, right?
Right.
Yeah, they're paying.
Right. And it says that anything that we have done through, uh, through BHMG over this amount that we have to pay for.
Okay, any questions? Read it as bill, please.
Bill number twenty-one dash zero seven eight, an ordinance approving a contract that the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission, MJMEUC, will coordinate an electric system and rate study to be done by BMHG Engineering and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and legally buying the city by his signature.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion. John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
And Teresa?
Yes.
And we had this done like four or five years ago. It's been done since I've been back.
So how often do we do it?
About every five years.
Bill number twenty-one dash zero seven eight, an ordinance approving a contract that the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission, MJMEUC, will coordinate elec, an electric system and rate study to be done by BMHG Engineering and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and legally buying the city by his signature.
Get a motion on the reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion. Teresa seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three seven one eight, an ordinance approving a contract that the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission, MJMEUC, will coordinate an electric system and rate study to be done by BMHG Engineering and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and legally buying the city by his signature.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Walter makes a motion. Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call, roll.
John?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
So I'm done. Anyway, the next committee meetings. Wage finance, need one?
Uh, we can set one the next meeting, um, in July, uh, to meet the budget, make a review.
Okay. Public works, anything?
Um, not for sure yet. I don't, as of now, no.
Okay, emergency services, anything? Port committee, I don't know if they're.
Taking a break.
Taking a break. Okay, comments by Alderman. We'll start down here with Teresa. Charles?
Uh, Sawmill Road in Lesman area is really clean. It's areas that we need to work on and get cleaned up. Uh, I'd like to thank the, uh, public works for putting benches out on chimney site. They, they did a great job. Concrete and the benches, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Linda?
I'd like it to go on the record that I want the dog park open.
I'll open it tonight if you want.
Thank you.
Can I turn it over to the park?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Sure you want that?
I want the dog park open, yes.
Reggie?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Walter?
Um, I'd just like to ask Ricky, uh, since we have the additional garbage area in Waynesville, if you have a holiday, you're not gonna be able to cover both sides of the, so, so we look for, okay. So following a holiday, it's gonna pretty much be, uh, just that one area.
Right, okay, gotcha, alright.
I don't know if I got that.
I don't need to.
Basically, what happened is they sent it on an automatic thing to go on Facebook, and it did not work to get the word out. So it did not go out, and I was getting, uh, texts, messages, and there was Facebook stuff that I found. Uh, and so we had some confusion on that, cuz I was telling St. Robert would probably be picked up on Tuesday, and then I put my trash out Tuesday, and it didn't go till today. So, uh, I wasn't too accurate, but anyway.
So you did get it.
Thursday and Friday, the regular Waynesville rules would be run.
Okay, so we look for that from now on, though, don't we?
Yeah, if the, the holiday is on Monday.
Yeah.
St. Robert backs up to Tuesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Or Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then Waynesville go Thursday, Friday. If the holiday is on Thursday or Friday, then they move it up to Wednesday and pick it up, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday.
And Wednesday is still recycling.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, and one, yes, recycling is.
I got an alibi.
Okay.
The recycle people didn't come by today. Uh, so all the recycle bins are still on the curb.
They ran today.
They came by out here.
I was gonna say, I thought they came by Lesman.
They didn't come by Sawmill.
So they, so they came this area.
Okay. They can run a truck out tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, where are we at? Michael?
Nothing.
Nothing? John?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Comments by administration, uh, city clerk, finance?
Um, just a quick, um, update on the operating account. Um, after the payment of the bills tonight, payroll, um, we have two point two million in the bank. And also, the, um, twenty twenty, um, financial audit was completed during the week of May seventeenth through the twenty-first.
And?
Long week. Hopefully, the delivery will be at the next council meeting, as I stated.
And our account is down because we paid, uh, the eight hundred and some thousand for, uh, St. Robert Boulevard, so.
But two point two is still good.
By two hundred thousand because we did, we did, uh.
Out of street money.
By the, I mean, we did get along for six hundred.
Wouldn't get stopped with all that?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
We want alibi. Uh, I did hear from the NAACP on June tenth, coming up June nineteenth.
Okay.
And they just wanted to know if they can just set off some fireworks right up in that area where they're gonna hold their celebration, uh, just for a short period.
Is it at the community center or what?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Anita takes care of that. Uh, we have a couple of groups that do that, so.
Alright.
Yeah, they can do that.
I, I do have something else.
Could I, could I say something? Uh, Walter, I believe that their site is gonna be in Waynesville, so they're gonna have to go through the city of Waynesville to do that.
It's not at the community center?
It's not at the community center.
Oh, they.
Okay.
Why would they ask me to do that, Mayor?
I don't, I don't have a clue.
I don't neither. A- alright.
Okay, yeah. Well, we'll, we'll allow them if it's up to their community center. We do that for the, uh, couple other things.
The senior center is supposed to open next Tuesday. So.
Set down meals.
Tell peo, for sit-down dining, yes. It, it'll seat a few less people than it used to seat. And you don't go up and get your own food. Your food will be served to you. You know, you go through a line, and people will put it on your plate. You won't be getting your own food or drinks or anything like that. But we will be open for indoor dining, and you can get your food to go if you don't feel comfortable eating there.
Okay.
And we need volunteers.
I have a whole bunch of volunteers.
Moving on to Mike Shepard, fire chief.
A lot of people responded.
This Saturday, um, there's a program that we checked into that the Red Cross offers for smoke detectors in homes. So they're coming down this Saturday, starting about ten, and we're gonna go to, uh, a couple of different subdivisions. And, uh, they're gonna be able to, uh, give out at least two smoke detectors per, per residence. Uh, and it's all through, uh, Red Cross. You actually fill out the application online. We're just gonna be there in conjunction to support them. So we got them to come here this Saturday.
I would think the homes that have been built.
Recently.
Well, yeah, in the last twenty years have all got smoke detectors. But the, the, the older homes and some of the, uh.
We're gonna try to hit those.
I think the neighborhood where the fire department is would be a good place to start.
They are. Yep, yep, we're gonna go down there, uh, with them. But they, it's all through Red Cross. You fill out the paperwork and everything, so it's kinda neat. It doesn't cost, it doesn't cost.
So if you want them to come to your house, you fill out an application online, or?
You have to Red Cross. I just made a post on the St. Robert Fire Rescue Facebook page about it.
Okay.
There's a link on there, so. Pretty stuff. Um, the truck that's on order, uh, still tentatively, we should receive it in, uh, August. Uh, July will go up to the final in Wisconsin on that, so we're trying, tracking on that pretty good.
You're gonna take this over?
Thank you. Steve, public works?
Um, there's a couple of dates here. We finished up some, uh, dirt work over at the community center, um, I think that was last week. Uh, we moved some of the stockpile over on the, the landing, started packing it back down into the hole and getting compaction on that. Moved on that a little bit. That was, um, a lot of people out there over there, so that, that's good. Uh, just trying to clear out some areas. Uh, we transferred the power from the overhead lines to the underground lines at the, the transfer station. So, um, we're finishing the last section of underground right now. Um, hopefully, we'll have the, the main building, office part of the building, turned over into, uh, all underground, so we can take every bit of the overhead.
Great.
Power of that area. Well, number six by Lowe's, uh, started pumping some dingy water, the turbidity meter, which actually hit, hit caught it. That's what it's supposed to do. So it shut it down. We did, uh, pump that well to waste for about twenty-four hours to let it clean up. Uh, it did clean up, and we was able to put it back online the, the next day. Um, a well out on, uh, Lake Shore Drive in, uh, Bridge Creek subdivision, it had, uh, went down, uh, over the weekend. Uh, went out and, and discovered that there was a, a hole in one of the bladder tanks. And it actually spewed water out onto the control panel and burnt the control panel. So, uh, we was able to get ahold of the well company that keep spare parts cuz they know exactly what we have up there. Um, we got it repaired and back up and running the very next day, that next morning, actually. Uh, streetlights, uh, on Ziggan Vine and the Bridge Creek area have been installed. They're just waiting to, they're, they're getting ready to run the wire to power them up now. So I would say that'll probably be in the next week or two. They'll be running all the wiring for that and get those up and running. Uh, whole changeout project along Route sixty-six is underway, and, uh, they've also started the, the tree trimming, uh, for the year. So that's all going on the same time. So that's all I have.
Where are they trimming the trees at?
It'll be different spots all over town. Uh, we didn't, I think we started out at Elm Street Airport. That's the, about the worst area we had. So we wanted to get that knocked out as soon as we could. But if it gets too wet to get in out there, then Jeff's got him. I think he's got about a dozen different places. They're just small, but that way we can hop around town, get across from town, get, uh, get most of that order fixed.
Okay. Okay, uh, Don?
Just a quick note about, well, I'll be taking the whole city down, probably about two o'clock in the morning because I'm replacing all the batteries on the servers, all the switches in the city. And then, as long as we don't run into more supply problems because COVID, each individual machine in the city will be getting a, a new battery backup because we had a little power fluctuation earlier today, and our new machine up front went off while we had customers in the building. So hopefully, I can get those battery backups in. If, I will build until I try to order them again. That's kind of all I've got.
Okay. Richard? Transfer station?
Uh, Thursday night, we was working, uh, they had a rack of, uh, MREs come in. We had to stay late a little bit, and our scale went down. And I had to make an emergency call to, uh, scale people. And, uh, they came down Friday morning, fixed this, and replaced two wires on this scale. And, uh, it was up running about nine, ten o'clock. And, uh, Tuesday morning, I got there, and it went down again. It got another wire. They had a crack in it. Moisture got in. And, uh, the probes that connected to the, uh, the weight pods went bad, and so they had to replace another wire. And, uh, the, I talked to D. Hard about shredder van loop, and they said in about the, the week of the fourteen, they can come down and do it.
Okay.
And, uh.
What's that about?
There's a drain underneath the shredder.
Uh-huh.
And, and when the paper's being shredded, it, it gets in there, and it's like glue, and it plugs the, uh, the drain.
Mm-hmm.
And then Steve has to come over there and clean it out, and they, it gets way down in there, and it's pretty hard to get it out. So we need to move it from where it's at so that it doesn't keep plugging up that drain.
To where?
Uh, we're gonna.
It's just right next door, just probably.
Closer to the outdoor?
Yeah, and it's closer to the, uh, the liquor box.
Okay.
So we had to add a whole wire.
Now, I, so, and I'd understand we have a shredder over at the transfer station where you, and the public can take paper over to shred? I know they're in cars, but not in.
I wrote the grant for it years ago. It's a cost.
Boxes that you need to shred of paper, you can come over there and shred it. Is there a cost to do it?
Yeah, it's, uh, the first ten minutes is ten dollars.
Okay.
And then it's graded after ten minutes.
But they do it.
Yeah.
They do.
But they do. Oh, okay, so you take your stuff over there?
Yep.
Is it drop off?
And they usually stand there to make.
No, you gotta stay there with it.
Gotta stay there, okay. Alright, yeah, I didn't know about that service, and I'm sure there's other.
And do you still need to make an appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Wednesdays and Fridays.
Wednesdays and Fridays, got it. Thank you. Don, uh, is the cameras on? The police officers at you?
Uh, I believe the UCF made June first the official day that everybody was supposed to be wearing body cameras.
So today's June second.
So I'm going to say yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Are you talking about the body cameras?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought they were supposed to be wearing those a month ago. They needed training, and they had to make decisions about.
Anything else, Ricky?
Um, the monthly, uh, tonnage was four thousand one hundred and twelve.
Ooh.
And the average was two oh six.
Okay. And I looked at the financials. Uh, seem to be going pretty good over there, too. Uh, they were all going into one account, which they shouldn't be. So, uh, we gotta get that, uh, sheet to you so you know what to put on the thing when to turn in the money and where it goes. Okay, Mr. Smith?
It's your turn.
What?
Your turn.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm seriously.
Uh, on the emergency services case, we argued that summary judgment motion on both cases in front of Judge Beeger. Judge Beeger asked us to do a proposed judgment for him on the summary judgment motion. Uh, it is a limited summary judgment motion because if we win, then we have to determine how much money they should have paid into the, what's called the special activity fund, or, and, uh, so we argued that I presented a very lengthy judgment, proposed judgment to the court, I think, last Thursday. Uh, emergency services and ambulance district are. Uh, Emergency Services and Ambulance District are each, uh, represented by the same attorney, and he filed his proposed judgment. Somebody at the Ambulance District, I believe, read his ju- proposed judgment, decided they'd won, so if you see some advertisement that they won, that was their proposed judgment, unsigned by the judge. Uh, the case is with the court now. He's a very bright man. He understands it. We had a very long argument. I like our position. I think I'm correct. Uh, now it's in the hands of the judge what he does. Uh, I think we did as well as we could on the case. Uh, we'll see what happens. I would recommend if we lost, which I don't think will happen, that we appeal it because I think I'm right, but now we just see what happens. And I've got several things for closed session that we need to talk about.
Okay. Anita?
Um, the Pit Lane Superlube Valvoline Store that opened up during COVID, they're gonna actually have a, uh, St. Robert Welcome with the mayor and everyone that wants to show up tomorrow at eleven. I know they're gonna have the Valvoline reps there. He told me, and they're gonna give out T-shirts as long as it lasts, and I think they had coupons and stuff, so they're kinda excited about.
Plus, uh, when you get done, uh, you go next door to Freddy's, and they're giving out food to support them.
Coupons, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So they've got a, uh, quite a little deal set up for tomorrow at eleven.
And you're all invited.
Right.
Anything else?
And the public's invited. Uh, the pool hadn't been open much, uh, 'cause it's been so cold and rainy. It did open on Saturday, and then we closed it, and, uh, our S O Gs, we need to change them so that we set our temp to seventy degrees, uh, to open. I visited with the City Eleven, and that's what they're set at, and the City of Springfield's around there, too. Uh, we didn't open the last two days, 'cause the temperatures were, um.
Sixties or less.
Yeah, didn't get up there, and it rained, so, uh, we're just trying to get that done. And this week was, uh, swim lessons sign up, and they were gonna start them next week. Uh, we have the indoor pool pump. I was texting Steve about that went out, and so we're not gonna be able to use the indoor pool, so we'll have to see about scheduling swim lessons around that. I'll get with Brittany in the morning. We've been working on our monthly reporting with FEMA, C M, and C D V G. We've had an airport board meeting, which I'm sure the mayor will report on. Uh, Waynesville School will be using the golf course in the mornings for the month of June for the, um, sports program.
Yay.
So they used it last year, and they're gonna use it this year, so I'm glad that'll get some kids on there and, and get it done. And we've been working with B H M G on the electric rate study.
Okay. Uh, moving along to my comments, I guess. Uh, the R V Park, uh, should be bid, and, uh, I talked to them about having a bid kind of separately so we can pick the prices, 'cause we need the, uh, utilities in, we need the pad sites in, and, and at least a gravel road, and then we can always come back and do some of that improvement as we go, uh, to keep the price down, to, to get it going and, and draw in some money. The other thing is, is we had the airport board, uh, last week. Uh, we were unanimous in selecting, uh, Sky West, which would go from, uh, Fort Leonard Wood to, uh, Chicago two times a day. Fifty passenger plane, uh, we hated to see Contour go, uh, but, uh, we made that recommendation, and that went in last Friday, uh, to D O T, Department of Transportation, and now they have to get it ready, and it goes to their board to approve, uh, the subsidy, uh, money, uh, to Sky West and all that stuff, and see if they approve that. Cape Air and, uh, Sky West were the two that were bidding, and, uh, Contour, if we didn't select either one of those, would've stayed, but we did select Sky West. All three entities proposed, uh, Waynesville and St. Robert, uh, on the airport board, so that's kind of where we're at on that. Um, it's been a very busy couple last weeks. I know Tyse has been very busy, uh, and, uh, there's been a lot happening. Uh, yesterday, we had, uh, Senator Hawley's representatives from Washington, D.C. for about two and a half hours, and a lot of good conversation, uh, about, uh, Fort Leonard Wood and, and those things that was run through S O P, and, uh, so it was a busy meeting yesterday. Uh, and, but a very good outcomes and, uh, uh, in the goals that we want. Uh, and, and the post was there, the Garrison Commander was there, the Deputy Garrison Commander. So they're well aware of all the things that we talked about, and, uh, it was a very good meeting with, uh, Alex, and I'm trying to think of her name, that came from D.C. They did get a tour of Post, uh, very happy to that, and they said they'd like to be back down here about every three months, so we'll see how that goes, but, uh, it was a very good meeting. And we've had several. Seems like every day has got four or five meetings lately, but, uh, it's been very busy, so, uh, we'll leave it ahead. The wastewater treatment plant, all this ordering of the equipment, uh, has been very beneficial, 'cause we're getting ready to, to bid Phase Two. Phase One has got a huge, it looks like the Great Wall of China down there, if you haven't been down near to the wastewater treatment plant, and they still got the upper, uh, wall to build, uh, to get the road up in there. Uh, and all this equipment, uh, if we would've waited till we bid Phase Two, then they wouldn't be bidding this equipment till like, uh, September, October. So we're bidding that now and paying for that, plus we don't get the markup from the contractor that would be bidding it. So that should be arriving about the time, uh, so we can be done by October of twenty twenty-two. So, uh, the engineers are handling that real well. Uh, we worked on the couple meetings. Gosh, I'd think we've had, what, three meetings, four meetings with the swimming pool people that'd be coming out in St. Louis. Uh, we're starting to get drafts of the grant application. Uh, we've got some, Anita's got some pictures, and I do, too, of the drawing sketches, and how that would lay on the land over there behind Culver's. Three hundred parking spaces.
Ooh.
Uh, it's, uh, between twenty and twenty-five million total, uh, closer to twenty-five million. Uh, but that kind of shifts and changes as, uh, we go through this process. But getting the grant is, uh, critical, so, uh, we're trying to get that. It's due to July twelfth for the grant. So we're looking at that. I've got with Ed McClany, and, uh, he's kind of working some finance numbers, uh, to see how that would go. Uh, so, uh, we're getting in pretty good shape there, at least we're getting the grant in to see what we can get from the federal government on that. But we did talk that at the, uh, the Hawley thing yesterday also, so, um, they wanna know after the grant is done, what kind of money is, is left on the table, so we'll see how that goes. So, okay, with that, uh, the meeting is being closed pursuant to Missouri Law Chapter six ten dash oh two one to include Section One Legal, Section Two Real Estate, and Section Three, which now. Get a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
Walter makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call.
Teresa?
Yes.
Yes.
Linda?
Yes, ma'am.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Reggie, is that you chime in over there?